Good evening, everyone.
We are gonna begin tonight with our invocation, and that's a short notice, and I'm sorry I didn't ask you ahead of time, but councilman Gil, would you be so kind? And then we follow the blessings of allegiance?
Lord, as we're gathered here tonight, God, I'm reminded in the scripture in James where it says that if any of us lack wisdom, then let us ask God that he giveth all men liberally and upbreathe not, and it shall be given unto him. God, I humbly asking for your guidance tonight, your wisdom, as we begin this meeting to conduct the business of our great city. Help us engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and to make the best decisions for this wonderful community that we live in. God, give us your wisdom and grace as we make the decisions that might affect all of us and those around us. Lord, let us be reminded tonight that we, that all that we do and all that we accomplish, let it first be pleasing unto you, and then for the greater good for our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I now call the Oregon City Council Meeting of Oak Hill, West Virginia, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Our clerk will now call.
Counselor-at-large, William Hannabas.
Here.
Word one, Diane Janey.
Here.
Word one also, Terry Van Busker.
Here.
And Roger Evans.
Here.
Word two, Chris Gue.
Here.
P J Elder.
Here.
And Tim Buskis.
Here.
Mayor Briscoe.
Thank you very much. You've all read your minutes in the packet. If we may have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve last meeting's minutes. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we have the same for the treasurer's report.
Mayor, I'll move that we accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried. We have some correspondence today, and I'll be reading those. This is from Benitez Jackson regarding resigning from the B Z A board. Mr. Jackson's quote, "I would like to tender my resignation from the zoning and appeals board effective immediately. Unfortunately, I am unable to devote the time and attention the position deserves, including attending meetings and fulfilling related responsibilities. It has been a privilege to serve, and I appreciate the opportunity to have been part of the board. Sincerely, Benitez Jackson." And he also states, he is still looking, oh, I'm sorry, this was from Hannah, Hannah Morgan, she's our, she's worse than the statements, just put them down. We can't give your exact time. She is saying that she is still looking for someone to fill the open seat and alternatives. So that's gonna be in the near future. So if any of you are interested in joining that board, please let us know. And this is a correspondence from the Oak Hill Churches of Nazarene, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. To Mayor Briscoe and Oak Hill City Council, I would personally like to thank Mayor Briscoe for being part of our recent seventy-fifth anniversary celebration, and for the beautiful proclamation from City Council. Thank you so much for your support and encouragement. As we move forward, know that we are as committed to serving this community as we have ever been. It is an honor and a privilege for us to walk alongside you in the work of making Oak Hill, West Virginia, a great place to live. Sincerely, Larry J. Lane. Thank you all for those. Now we'll move into our citizens' comments portion, and we have King Riggs.
Yes, sir.
From Mendon, if you could step up to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Navy.
My name is King Riggs. I'm from Mendon, West Virginia. Short story about myself, I was born and raised here. In fact, I was born right across the street from that hospital. Graduated Oak Hill House, Oak Hill House School in nineteen eighty-six, joined the military right after that. I served twenty-four years with the United States Army, beautiful career. Retired back home. There's many places I could have retired, but I love Oak Hill. Oak Hill, I mean, that's, it's my home. I came back home to Mendon, and the town hadn't changed much, and that's the reason why I'm here. You know, asking for help to get Mendon looking beautiful again. You know, it's my hometown, uh, streetlights don't work when it rains. It floods, water goes actually to people's houses. People down there don't have much, but, uh, you know, they love where they at. Requesting things like, you know, maybe get a dumpster, uh, on the weekends so people can clean up their yards. Uh, streetlights, uh, help me, help with the streetlights. There's, uh, trees that's leaning on power, power lines, just waiting to fall. I tried calling, uh, the cable company, uh, yeah, we'd be right down there. I actually had a pole, uh, first moved back to my house, the house actually was born and raised, and I moved back to that house. There was a power pole that was leaning. Only thing was holding up was just one wire. It took me almost a month and a half to get someone down and fix it. I got to the point where I just called my insurance company, filed a claim. So when it falls down, I'll be ready for it. They finally came down and fixed it. Uh, it's hard trying to do it, you know, with just a few of us to get things fixed down there. So I'm asking you guys and ladies, you know, to help us out. Like I say, you know, just come down and look at the place. Um, I know the roads belongs to the state, not much to the city, but this, if you can, free times, come down and look at the place. It looks like a jump. Uh, again, my name is King Riggs. I'm in West Virginia.
Counselor, do you all have any questions for this lady? All right, you have questions? Moving along?
What's your house address? What, what's your?
It's, uh, three forty-two Old Mendon Road. Thank you.
Look, you have a neighbor down there named Fred. Put him away. He thinks he's behind you.
Yeah.
That man worked.
He always got my back.
Any further questions, counsel? All right, thank you very much. We have a familiar name, Allison Navara. She's going to talk to us about the New River Gorge Towns update. She's gonna give us an update.
I've got stuff for you guys, 'cause what better way to win heart, heart and minds than with stuff?
You start talking all past that.
You got Dr. Love with you, also for another performance, you know? Still remember that.
Yeah, it still pops up on the internet every now and then when I'm, uh, when I'm getting on there.
Goes away.
All right, guys. So, uh, good evening. My name is Alon Navara. I think I am familiar with and know everybody in the room right now, so it's good to see everybody. Uh, so we did bring a few gifts for you guys tonight. Uh, this is regarding our N R G towns initiative. Uh, so an overview on this N R G towns initiative, a couple of weeks ago, we held the official launch for this event. Uh, that happened at the Gaines Estate. So this initiative brings together twelve communities across Fayette, Nicholas, Summers, and Raleigh Counties under this one shared, uh, regional brand. And so the point of this brand is to showcase our history, outdoor rec, and the authentic small-town culture that makes this place so unique. Uh, this brand is centered around two simple ideas. One is this, uh, promise of real towns and unreal adventures, which is, which is us. That's the New River Gorge region. Uh, and our tagline is Field the N R G. So this project isn't about, uh, replacing anyone's individual identity. This was actually created to augment that. So it's about amplifying our identities through consistent wayfinding, uh, shared marketing, and a stronger collective story. So as of right now, we've got, uh, a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars invested into this initiative. That includes a two thousand five hundred dollar match that came from the city of Oak Hill. So you want to talk about a return on investment? We've got that and then some, uh, with this, with this initiative. Uh, that twenty-five hundred dollars helped leverage regional funding from all four county commissions and the West Virginia Community Development Hub. Uh, together, this brought in significant outside resources to benefit Oak Hill and the broader New River Gorge region. So this N R G towns initiative initially started out with branding and wayfinding through, uh, the project that we worked on a couple of years ago through the West Virginia Community Development Hub. So, uh, through the hub, we worked on branding and wayfinding for the city of Oak Hill, and which is awesome. You'll see some of that now, uh, shared on social media through, yeah, through, through Needles Eye. It's shared through the Department of, uh, our Oak Hill Parks and Rec Department. And that is all the initiative that we started a couple of years ago that we've now grown into this gigantic thing, so to speak. That is, is the first time we've really been able to bring all four counties of the New River Gorge region together so that we can showcase our individual, what makes each community in the New River Gorge region unique, right? So we're different from Fayetteville, which is different from Montgomery and Smithers and Anstead. And so what this initiative aims to do essentially is to showcase what all we have to be thinking before, not only for the outside folks looking in, but for those of us that live here, right? You get used to the things we take for granted so much, what all we really have born for us. So, um, Bobby's gonna talk a little bit, excuse me, Robert, he was Bobby when we were in high school, uh, he's gonna talk a little bit about the objectives of this and, um, where we go from here.
Coming home, I'm interested in it, Nick. Um, so, uh, here, do you want, you want to hang up? T-shirts? Sorry, I figured sizing.
Oh, you put me on.
A couple of extra larges on top. Anybody extra large? You guys want? His hands. I'm going broad. Look, I'm a three X, so look at me, any size you want, far as I'm concerned. So, um, yeah, uh, objectives, consistent, clear wayfinding signage across the region to help visitors and locals navigate all the things that our communities have to offer. Um, so some of the, the, the assets that we got are branding and wayfinding that go across the region as well as individualized for each town within the N R G towns movement. And you guys, if you've seen the Needles Eye Park commercials lately, you've seen the Explore Oak Hill logo and the oak leaf that comes down, and, and those are part of the package we did for Oak Hill, for Explore Oak Hill, which are also part of the bigger project of N R G towns. Strengthening regional marketing and storytelling to draw more people into our towns, that's really the hallmark, is teaching us how do we tell a story as a region that has a collective communal sense of pride and belonging, but also tell the unique stories of each of our towns and the assets we each individually have to draw people from the park that are already visiting, the couple million people a year, into the individual communities, and help each community, including Oak Hill, rediscover and grow and showcase its unique identity as a part of that bigger story. Uh, so the next steps for us include formalizing the Regional Steering Committee. That process has already begun. Uh, but we need to really lock in the membership from each of the twelve communities, as well as form our bylaws and make sure things are drawn up legally and, um, uh, done the way they're supposed to. Um, and Oak Hill is not just participating in this, we've literally been at the center of making this happen. So thank you guys for being on board the last few years, um, and really seeing this through to, to where we are now and, and everywhere we're about to go. Um, you want to bring it up in close?
That's it.
That's it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Enjoy the, the thing, spread them around to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along to our unfinished business. Number one, consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation on vape shop ordinance.
Okay, so, um, I'm bad at the lead stuff when I finish business until it's finished. So, um, the Planning Commission actually meets next week to finalize the language that we had discussed regarding the vape shop ordinance. Uh, the actual tweak to it, Terry, was, was we keep, we're keeping the fifteen hundred foot, but we added the wording.
For religious establishments, that was actually added, and I think it's still kind of a bounce on the distance.
Yeah, we're still, we're still tweaking that, but next Monday, they meet, uh, to finalize that language. So we will have a final draft for you guys to approve, uh, or to modify any, any aspects of it, um, at the November meeting. Okay?
Do we need to table that?
That would be up to you. Um, it's gonna be unfinished until I finish.
I'll make a motion to table that for next month.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table this, uh, consideration of Plan Commission's recommendation on vape shop ordinance till next month. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number two, consideration of election changes.
So, um, me and Mr. Powell have been speaking about this, and there will be some tweaks that we have to make to the, uh, the ordinance. I think I sent everybody a draft a month or so ago, but we need to look at how we actually amend the charter. And, uh, we're gonna bring that to you all. We really want to have an executive session, uh, with you at the next meeting to go over the legalese, and then have a draft, uh, at the November meeting that we will ask for approval for changing the election ordinance. And this is just to meet the, the state code changes that we're doing. We're, we're trying to just meet up with what they have already put in place. We have till twenty thirty-two to adopt this, and if we don't adopt it by then, they're gonna make us adopt it anyway. So I kinda wanted to get ahead of the game and make sure that we're on par for what we need to be. So with that said, um, if, if you all want to make a motion to table that until the November meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the, uh, consideration of the election changes until the November meeting.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. And, uh, new unfinished business number three, consideration of roof repairs.
So, uh, as counsel knows, um, we got in some very large bids for a brand new roof. So we, uh, backed up and looked at what we could do to fix the current roof. Uh, we called the person that had put on the former, uh, spray foam roof, and they had came up with a plan to, uh, cover the current roof with this new spray foam that will give us a five-year warranty. Uh, the problem is, is of course, it's always expensive. Everything nowadays is expensive. Uh, we're looking at about forty-five thousand dollars to cover the entire roof with the current substance that's on it, and basically that's the only thing you can put back on it. Because anything new we put on this roof, the old spray foam cup has to be removed. That's one of the bigger parts of the past bid was the removal of the spray foam. So, um, I'm recommending, uh, that we get this approved tonight, and that, um, they said if we could get it approved tonight, the, uh, for winter, we definitely want to get it done before then. Uh, we have so lay on that roof, and we have more leaks in our council room than where else, so, um, I would ask for that approval tonight.
We have two here. Can you briefly, I mean, we can see, but just so everybody knows, briefly go up.
Yeah. Uh, one of them is for Roof A, which is the, the taller section above the, uh, the main office. Roof B is for this section here, the, the shorter piece.
Does that cover both or just this section?
Forty-five is the total for both sections.
Do we have money allocated ourselves?
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion that we get the roof fixed.
I'll second that. Pointy border right here, um, sanitary board, are they going to be approached with?
Sanitary Board has agreed to pay half.
Okay, you're not.
City manager, maybe Mr. Powell, I'm sorry, city manager, maybe Mr. Powell will want to, uh, respond, one of them will say, we advertised for bids for the replacement of the roof. Still bids, and they came in extremely expensive, and we decided to, to go another route. Is it okay that we haven't advertised this repair?
So my thought is, is the fact that this is, this material is the only thing that could go back over the current material.
But.
So we're very limited, and they are the only people in the area that does this type of repair.
And they put the roof on and?
They put the initial, the, the roof on that's on their name.
But. You have any problem with it, Mr. Powell?
I do not. Sounds like it's all sports. Oh, no, I just wanted to steer on the bike for you.
And so with five-year warranty, this comes with?
Yes.
So that gives us five years to build up some cash reserves to replace this thing if, if it goes bad in that period of time. And honestly, at some point, we'll have to.
Yeah.
I mean, five, seven years down the road. I'd be great if we get seven years out of it, uh, you know, and then we could put the roof that I had planned on putting on, that has a thirty-year lifetime, so not have to worry about it.
We have a motion already, had a second, that would proceed with the roof repairs from phone code roofing and coatings. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, moving along to new business. I see we have a promotion tonight from Officer Aaron Ratcliffe, Sergeant.
I believe everybody has a copy of the Civil Service Recommendation, uh, in front of you. This is, uh, one of the promotions or the first promotion that requires action by council for an officer to be promoted to sergeant. Corporal Ratcliffe has been here six years and has met the other requirements, uh, for this promotion and, and Civil Service Commission recommends.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to remove Corporal Aaron Ratcliffe to the rank of sergeant.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the second. All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? All right, you get your second bullet. Congratulations.
That was a good one.
Y'all Facebook her on.
Congratulations.
I'll probably get pulled over on the way home.
Not twice.
All right, we're moving on to number five. The Brothers of the Wheel are requesting a program, and they would like to hold it on Main Street. It's part of their Christmas fundraiser. Uh, they do a lot of work, and they bring a lot of toys to the needy children. And they asked me back during the Oakley Festival if we would consider closing the street, uh, sometime next month. Uh, they don't have a set date yet, and none of the guys are present tonight, but as we learn more, there'll be more information to be brought forward. But if that's something you all would consider, that'd be fantastic. It'll be some like a small festival, you know, where the main street's closed. It'll be like a bike show and, and things like that. It's up to you guys.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do you want us to wait?
Okay.
You want to tangle this and wait, then I'll try to get them to maybe get here and?
Okay.
Let's an exact date.
Okay. I'll, I'll leave a date to ask the Department of Highways anyway. Okay.
All right.
If we can table this till November?
Want to motion that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Now, we have a motion and a second to table the Brothers of the Wheel request for their program to be held on Main Street. And as soon as I find more about, I'll let you know. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Number six, Prevent and Protect Wellness Program, and Bobby Monroe and his lovely wife are here to present to us.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and, uh, Chris, I appreciate your time tonight, and I know several of you. I know this guy will walk your legs off. I've known Bill for probably eight years and known Chris for probably six or seven years as well. Anyway, pleasure meeting you all. Uh, I am Bobby Monroe. It's my beautiful wife, Sharon Monroe. We represent Baron Advisors. How I know a lot of you is that, uh, I brought a program to the state of West Virginia, uh, the B and O program, where we would find companies coming in to your city or town, not paying B and O, and then we would do all the calling and collecting. We brought back close to sixteen million dollars back to the state through that program. And, uh, I've been living basically in West Virginia for about nine years. I've signed every city and every town, and one village, Barbersville, um, uh, on that program. And, um, very, very thankful that, uh, how, how I've been able to, to work in West Virginia and what that brings back to every community, every, uh, city and town across West Virginia. When I heard about this program, I was a couple of years from retirement. I didn't want to do it, and, uh, I said the only way I'll, I'll listen to it is if I can bring my wife. Uh, she has thirty-three years of, uh, benefits experience in the health industry. And, um, this program is offered through Baron Advisors. It's called, uh, Prevent Protect. And, um, and so this program does, like I said, does not replace anything that you currently have for your employees. It's a program that Oak Hill is able to give back to every employee and give them benefits. and give them benefits that will fill the gaps that they may have a need for. Any kind of existing conditions that they may have, it's guaranteed issue, which is amazing. If they have any kind of cancer or chronic illness, they'll be approved. They'll be able to obtain these benefits. And so I do want to give you just a quick list. I'm gonna let my wife explain. I'm about four months into this, so I'll totally mess it up if I try to explain it. And but we're, we're very thankful to be here. The West Virginia Municipal League has not only endorsed this, but their employees are also already on this program. The NLC also has endorsed this, the National League of Cities. They're looking at this thing going nationwide. But we've got just, I'm going down real quick. Taylor County Board of Education, Lewis County Board of Education, City of Princeton, City of St. Mary's are already on the program. We've got coming on, Sharon and her team before hopefully January first or February first of twenty twenty-six, Marion County Board of Education, Nitro Village of Barbersville, Clarksburg Housing Authority, St. Albans, Clarksburg, Glenville State University, New Martinsville, Hurricane, Buchanan. This week, we've got council meetings, of course, here at Oak Hill, Moundsville, Elkins, Town of Fayetteville. And then we also have meetings this week with Ripley, believe it or not. I always say that. Logan and Weirton. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Sharon. And the great thing about me working with my wife is that I don't have to wake up anymore in a hotel by myself. And like I said, I've been doing that for a long time. But the first week we worked together, she quit ten times. And I hired her back thirteen. So yeah, I'll, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. So again, we're Prevent Protect. It is our wellness program. It is a wellness program that is offered, and it's offered by the city. So basically, the way that works for you would be is through tax savings. The federal government will never reach out and call you and say, hey, we have tax money that we want to give back to you. They just won't do that. But what they're trying to do with this program is keep the dollars off the Medicare Medicaid system. And with this wellness program, if you can implement a wellness plan, healthcare reform in the mid-two thousands said, we will give you tax incentives for you to be able to do this. With those tax incentives, you can offer additional benefits to your employees that will bridge a gap. Excuse me. This wellness program is proactive. It is a, it's a AI-driven. I'm thinking about AI-driven. Again, it is interactive with employees. So we look at, we focus on three different aspects of wellness. It's not just your physical wellness, but it's your mental wellness and it's your financial wellness. So when we talk about those three components, and we talk about how you would have tax, you would offer tax savings to your employees to be able to do this, it is through FICA savings. So whatever you pay for your employee through FICA savings on their, their payroll, that's where these funds come from. So not only do they get a bucket of money to utilize for these services, that's how they pay for these services, which you also have a revenue positive that comes back to your city. So usually it's, excuse me, between five hundred and fifty and six hundred dollars per enrolled employee. This is completely voluntary, and it is per year. So each employee that enrolls, it is a voluntary situation. We sit down and we talk to them, and we go through each component of our program. We start with the physical wellness because that's where we believe will be the most help for an employee throughout their life. If you can have someone start being proactive about their own physical wellness, that not only feeds to them, but it feeds to their children and their children and their children. And we, we are creating the awareness of that, that healthy lifestyle. So through the proactive wellness program, we use a company called Attentive. They focus only on a wellness program. So the employee would go online. The one time after the open enrollment started, they would go online, fill out information for themselves, whether it's high blood pressure or their blood pressure, their BMI, their heart rate, things like that, personal information. Do you currently have a chronic condition? Most of us are walking around, we have no idea what a chronic condition is, and that we have it until we hit the emergency room or urgent care. So again, this is proactive, going online, putting in some information about our own health and our own well-being. And then the system is run again AI through the Mayo Clinic data. Mayo Clinic pulls tricks and tips for employees. So if I've got high blood pressure, it kind of teaches me what I need to do to maybe lower that blood pressure. If I have diabetes, it teaches me what I need to eat. Do I need to exercise more? Do I need to find different recipes to use? So again, it gives that information. Also on the physical wellness side, there's an app that an employee can download. It's absolutely incredible. If you're already tracking a condition and you need to track your blood pressure, and you need to track your heart rate, and you need to make sure everything's working well, this app, if you can hold it for one bump of your face, it will detect all of that and will give you your readings right there on that app. You can take that app to your doctor. If you know your blood pressure's high and your heart rate's high, it's going to tell you. You probably need to seek care, and that's something that is amazing. And most of us can't listen to our own body fast enough to know that we need to do this. Again, just an incredible part. And then the other thing that will, that will help your medical claims, we have a twenty-four-seven telemedicine. This telemedicine program costs zero to your employees. No deductibles, no copays, no nothing. Just by being enrolled in this plan, they have the eligibility for this. That helps them because they can go call the doctor right there. They can pick up their prescription. It doesn't hit your medical plan claims ever. The only thing that would hit your medical plan claim would be for the prescription cost. That's it. All the other claims would go through this. So again, meeting that physical need and trying to kind of educate people and get them on the right track without beating them with stick, just kind of teasing them with the carrot. Mental health is the next piece. Your mental wellness is again very important in our society. And we are just now getting to the point that we can talk about it, that it's not a stigma that we don't talk about any longer. This was started by a young lady who was a therapist. She was married to an LAPD police officer. She saw him go through traumas, you know, during their marriage. His coworkers go through traumas, but never get treatment for it, never get help, never talk to anyone, just keep it all wrapped up inside. And then years later, months later, see it come to head and have to have treatment. And it was something that she felt very led to, to help with. So what she did is she created a network of therapists across the country. She had vetted all of these therapists to make sure that when, if I need to call someone because my child is acting up, when I call someone, I'm calling the right person. They're connecting me within forty-eight hours to that right person. If we have a police officer who's been, had, had a shooting, then he needs help or she needs help, that puts them right in connection with someone, not a marriage therapist, not a child therapist, with someone who can help in that traumatic instance. So we feel like that is helping, number one, the suicide rate, which has gone up tremendously throughout our cycle as we get older. But it's helping all of us. It's great for teachers. All of our boards of educations have implemented this across the board just because they felt like our teachers need help as well. They need that avenue to get connected to. And I know I'm talking a lot. I'm trying to talk fast, but the physical wellness piece is the last component there. And again, that physical, sorry, financial wellness piece is the last. The financial wellness piece is what drives everything else that we feel. So if we are sick and we are physically need help, or if we mentally need help, and we are financially struggling, nothing else is going to make any difference. So what we've done is we've partnered with companies and we are offering, like Bobby said earlier, supplemental benefits that bridge a gap. We're not here to replace anything that you have. What we're here to do is try and educate employees on what they could need in the event that there's a chronic illness, in the event that there's hospitalization. So what we've done is when we vetted our carriers, we've made sure, number one, that all of our products are guaranteed issue, meaning no medical questions, no one's denied. Okay, so if someone's been denied currently because of a medical condition, they can come on the plan. And there's a, there's a life insurance policy, which is whole life. It is a cash accrual policy. So as that policy grows, gets older, that cash gets bigger, which is really nice. Again, a nest egg for children, a nest egg for retirement, what have you. The other is short-term and long-term disability. Again, if someone is out, maybe they could have afforded short-term disability, but they couldn't afford long-term disability. That's where this comes into play. Again, they're using their allotment from their FICA tax savings through their payroll deductions to pay for these services. It's not an additional line item that's coming out of their paycheck. Their paycheck does not change. And we do a calculation based on your population of employees. We do a census of their payroll, their deductions, things like that, to show what everybody's allotment would be. And then we walk them through and educate them on every service that is available to them and what they're eligible for. And they can spend that whole allotment, but we don't have them go over. Again, we don't want that paycheck to change. We want this to be a great experience and an educational experience.
And because the program is so affordable, and it doesn't change their bring-home pay, if you tell an employee this, you know, their paycheck's going to come down, they're going to say, no, I know, I know, I need it, but they're going to say, no. We're seeing eighty-five to ninety-five percent participation. We just brought on St. Mary's. They're smaller than you guys. But every employee signed up for, for this program with the exception of one, and he was going to retire in two, two or three months. So he didn't sign up. And through the AI-based program through Attentive, when, when I talked to Mayor Rader at Ripley, believe it or not, she said, I really wish we would have had something like this a few years ago. She said, she had a council member that came into a council meeting. And one of the other council members said, hey, your eyes look a little cloudy. Have you been to the doctor? And he said, no, I'm fine. I don't need to go to the doctor. He ended up going to the doctor, and he had stage four pancreatic cancer. He passed away three months after that. So she started crying, Sharon started crying, and I said, all right, we got to keep moving on. But then
It's very emotional because it's very real.
Yeah. And then another, just real quick, down in Princeton, a young lady walked in when we were signing their employees up. And she said, I know I won't qualify for this. And we're like, no, you will. Tell us what, what's going on. And she said, well, you know, I've been diagnosed with breast cancer, ovarian cancer, I'm sorry. And she said, I have an eleven-year-old daughter. I'm a single parent. And she was able to get additional life insurance and also get short-term and long-term disability because she knew she was going to be out for chemo and radiation. So it's just story after story. And if you guys remember the floods in Texas, I remember the police officer standing in the woods doing like this. I mean, this thing, and that's why I made a career change, was because the, the B and O program was great. It brought back money to the cities and towns in West Virginia. And this is our focus is West Virginia. And when we left the meeting, I looked at Sharon and said, what do you think? She said, we need to do this. She said, this is huge. She said, this is something that could help every employee, could help their families that is across the state. And like I said, that's why the West Virginia Municipal League saw this, National League of Cities, they see the benefit. But it is, like I said, it's a program that's out there. And you guys have, is it like sixty-five employees? Am I remembering that correctly? Close to it. So let's just say sixty signed up. That's thirty-six thousand back in your budget every year. That, so if you're looking at long-term, like roof repairs, times five years, I mean, it, it, it could add up and help pay for some of those things. And that's some of the things that we hear that when we're meeting with these cities, they see the financial part of it. Nitro, Mayor Casebolt said, you know what? We're going to take that. We're going to give that back to every employee instead of three thousand dollars for HSA program. We're going to put six hundred dollars back into, to that as well. So you, you don't have to do that. You can, you can spend those funds any way you want to other than just writing them a check. But it is something that's revenue positive for the city. And, and it's also revenue positive for the employees where it doesn't change their paycheck. You know, if anything, they'll have a little uptick in their paycheck. Couple of police officers that Sharon met with in St. Mary's, they, they spent all their money, and one of them had like thirty-three dollars left over. He's like, that's thirty-three dollars. He said, that's a tank of gas for me to get back and forth to work. So anyway, that's what we have. I know that some of you have, have heard about this program. Just want to open up the floor for any questions that you may have. And, and just go from there.
Well, Bobby, I'm still trying to determine, wrap my head around the, the actual costs for the city.
Okay, so it's, it's through the healthcare reform, and Obama said, if you come up with this wellness program, like Sharon said, you get to put, instead of paying the FICA taxes for the employees, those FICA tax savings goes back into your budget. Okay, so the city pays, it's a forty-dollar a month per employee. The employees pay eighty-nine dollars per month per employee. And that total is covered through those FICA savings. So and I'll let Sharon tell you, just explain real quick how that, that, the pay.
So there's four payroll codes that this changes on their, on a person's paycheck. We also cover that with the employee so they know. So the way this, this works is there's always a premium for everything, so that nothing is free. So the premium for the wellness plan, it, it's, it can be averaged per the federal government. It can be averaged. So this particular company averages at eleven seventy-three per month. So if you think about a person's paycheck right now, they will have their gross pay, they will have a Section one twenty-five plan currently. If they have any deductions with, with pre-tax, could be 401K, dental, vision, even part of your medical plan. And, and Aflac, absolutely. And then they could also have, then that shows their taxable income. Okay, so that's how that lowers that. And it lowers that based on FICA as well because it's lowering their taxable. So on this side of the house, same thing, the Section one twenty-five plan would be put in place. It can be a separate one, or it can be the same one that you currently have. It can be built in and wrapped together. But the Attentive Plan, which is the wellness plan, is a Section one twenty-five pre-tax dollar. So what you're doing is you're doing gross income, you're doing current Section one twenty-five pre-tax savings, and you're doing another line for a pre-tax item. So that eleven seventy-three goes in that employee's paycheck as a pre-tax item, which lowers their taxable income again. When it lowers that taxable income again, that's where the bucket of money comes from for the employee that we call an allotment. Every allotment will be different per employee because every employee is different, every, everyone's elections are different from their paycheck, all their deductions could be different. So every, everyone's would be different, and you would all have that upfront. So everybody would know what that savings would be. Then it's called a SMUR. I know that's really weird, but that eleven seventy-three is put back into the employee's paycheck. So it all balances out. And then you have that taxable savings is where they spend from. So let's say their taxable savings is two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, to make it simple. Eighty-nine dollars is the first amount that comes out of that employee's paycheck for the Attentive program. The next line items would be if they wanted life insurance, disability, critical illness, accident. All of that comes out of that taxable savings allotment. And in the end, it shows what the deductions were and what the difference, it will show, we will show the difference in what their payroll is. So if it changes it by two dollars, it increases it by two dollars, we'll show that. If it increases it by fifteen dollars, because they spent as much as they could without going over their allotment, then that's what we will show for them. But we calculate it out to the penny so that that employee knows when they get up from that enrollment, they have not spent more than what they have. So that doesn't change. So what that does for you is there is a bill, obviously. So there would be a bill from Attentive. There is a bill from Ally Connect, the mental health piece, if you wanted to do that portion. And then there's obviously the bill for the supplemental carriers. So when those bills come in, it comes in through one company. It's a TBA that we use to consolidate all three of those bills. The first bill that could generate, let's say it's a January bill is generated January thirty-first, it is not due until the end of February. So you're, you're two months there where you're holding those FICA taxes, where you would be putting them out and paying them. So you have that money sitting over here. That's how those premium dollars are going to be paid. So you're not coming out of your budget line item for these. They're coming out of those FICA savings that you already saved up over here. Okay, and then your money is an automatic, and it's just going to sit in your budget line because it's, it's not going to come out anymore.
And with, for the employees, is it we've met with so many, so I'm trying to remember, but is there a cost shared for the, their health benefits, like a eighty-twenty or ninety-ten or whatever it may be? Is that, do they pay a portion of their medical premiums? Okay, so the other thing that we didn't tell you is that with their allotment, if it was like the two eighty-nine like Sharon said, the eighty-nine dollars would cover the attentive to cover that part. And then they'd have two hundred dollars left over. They can take up to twenty percent of that two hundred dollars, which is forty dollars to help offset their, their current medical premiums. So that's the other thing. Like I said, I mean, you tell an employee, you know, it's not going to decrease your pay. You can actually use part of this money to help pay for those medical benefits. You know, they, they, they get excited about it. And, and like I said, we're not here to replace anything, but this program does open up a lot of different benefits and avenues that they currently don't have. So did that, did that explain it, Chris? I mean?
I think, I think I understand what you're saying. But money will be coming out of, money will be in pre-budget. But money will be coming out of money that will be pre-budgeted as employee FICA.
Right.
That is correct.
It's not additional line item that you have to budget for.
No additional monies. It's money that's saving the reverberant budget that it runs.
So at the beginning, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say it was an initial five hundred dollar per employee buy?
So the ci- so so the revenue positive for the city is anywhere from five hundred to six hundred dollars, actually five fifty to six hundred dollars. That stays with the city. So that's your revenue positive. It does, there's no buy-in. Absolutely, there's no buy.
That saves it, the city has every, every year per employee. So that's where I came up with the sixty employees times six hundred, basically, you know, thirty to thirty-six thousand back in the budget for Oak Hill City.
The one thing, the the one thing that I have to remind you that drives all of this is the wellness plan. The wellness plan makes this option available for your employees. Otherwise, it's not available. Otherwise, there are no tax savings. They have to enroll in that wellness plan. Now, again, it is a proactive plan they're using when they wanna use it. We hope it's helping them. We hope they're using it to to get good information. And they do get trickle emails. And in the Lewis County Board of Education, we went for a follow-up session not long ago. They had a big teachers' meeting and a conference, and they brought it, brought us in, and there, people would come on and say, gosh. I really love all the emails that I get. It has great recipes and great tips and great things like this. And this one gentleman walked by and he said. I get a lot of emails lately. He said, I just don't know about this. And that our counterpart looked at him and said, well, we can take you off of that if you want to. He said, well, no, 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 I don't want you to take me off of it, but I get a lot of emails now. So it is, again. Proactively sending information to your employees with the data that they've already put in the system. Not new information, but feeding from what they gave to the mayor of Clinton, if that makes sense. There's no cost, there's no cost upfront to set it up. It is revenue positive.
I know we've, we've talked a lot, so I don't wanna take up the whole night. Uh, any other questions? We would love to have you guys on board. Like I said, we can give you as many references as you wanna call. Uh, like I said, National League of Cities, West Virginia Municipal League, you talk to any of those folks. But um it's a great program, and it would be a great revenue stream back to the city of Oak Hill as well.
And if we need to do a workshop separate, we can.
That's what we're doing this week for.
We're doing a lot, lot of those, definitely.
Is is there, is there an obligation that if something doesn't work out, if the city of Oak Hill can say, we're done?
Yeah, it's it's, it's a hundred percent optional for the employees to sign on board too. And um, you know, it's, it's, I'll let you explain that, how that.
It is. It, so the only, the only exception to that is a section one point twenty-five plan will lock you in for twelve months. So, and that's standard. A section one twenty-five is a federally regulated form that you can pre-tax someone. So when you set that up. You're locked into that for twelve months for your employees. Um, but other than, but they're not fit, you're not feeling, they're not feeling anything. It's sitting behind the scenes and running payroll. And and you're not having to do anything through the year. It's it's just there. But at renewal, yes, if you say, okay, we're not gonna do this. We don't see the benefit in it. Our employees don't see the benefit in it. Absolutely. We haven't had that happen yet, but absolutely.
Ms. Vaughn, what, what's your feelings on this?
I'm still stuck on the uh, uh, life insurance with no questions.
Guaranteed issue.
That's important to me, because I have breast cancer.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We have sat in several meetings like this that you can see people. You can see someone looking at someone, and you know, and you know not to say anything, but they're like, this, this could, I have cold chills right now. This could be something that many, many people have had to deal with, because we all know, if we have a condition. And nine times out of ten, you're trying to get life insurance, especially if it's on an individual basis. Number one, it's out of the roof when you get our age. And number two, if you've had a medical condition, you're not going to get coverage. So the biggest thing, again, to make this whole thing work and be cohesive and be a benefit. When we vet our carrier partners, that is what we vet them with. We say, we must have guaranteed issue. We must have these limits, and usually seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand in life insurance. It's awful, also for the dependent spouse and children, they can buy in as well. Same thing with their short-term and long-term disability, guaranteed issue, critical illness, which is very important. If anyone in here has had a cancer or any uh transplants or any uh. What's it called? I can't think right now. Um, anyway, uh, any critical illness. Um, these plans pay you. It can be a ten thousand dollar policy or a twenty thousand dollar policy upon diagnosis. That's huge. For this young lady he was talking about with the with the can, ovarian cancer, she did that. She was able to get a critical illness policy, and she was able to get a payout from that, which was huge for her. So true life stories, and and again, it is, I'm, we are very passionate. I have done this for thirty-three years.
It sounds like it's a lot like Aflac.
It is, it is, it is, listen, it is exactly like your Aflac products, but it's a group chassis, a group basis and rate. And it's guaranteed issue, and it's bundled with the uh preventive care piece of it. It's just what drives those savings, which makes it affordable to your employees. Costs neutral.
And we're like an Aflac, you may only see twenty, twenty-five percent participation, because the employees have to invest in that. Versus it coming through these FICA savings. And that's why we're seeing eighty-five to ninety-five percent, you know, participation go out. And sign these cities and school boards and stuff up.
Is there a limit on how many employees you have to have?
If you have sixty, only six sign up, you're on board, you know.
And everybody talks. So what we do find is once people start talking about it, and education is the key. I mean, education is truly the key. So we like to do either departmental group meetings or a group meeting. So everybody hears the same story, understands it at the same time, can ask questions that feed off of other questions. That is huge. And then we have individual sessions. We sit down with that employee, because they've taken their information home and talked to their spouse, and they said, okay. This is, I think, what we need to do. Talk to me through, talk, talk with me through this. Help me understand, do I need this or do I need this? And and it it is incredible to watch people. It is, again, just a huge blessing that that we can watch and see transpire. So.
One, one other thing I have to ask is, I, and I, I understand what you're saying, that through the reduction of FICA taxes is is. The funding for the event, um, event and protect. But part of that is social security, right? So if I'm an employee, and especially if I'm a a younger employee. And I give my, I I can fund this, this program through reduction in my pocket taxes. Part of that's social security. So do you know what the long-term effect is when that young employee is sixty-two, sixty-five? And retires as far as the reduction in their social security benefits?
We can't say exactly, because obviously, I don't even know if the social security administration knows, but they look at every, at thirty-five years of of working. So over that thirty-five-year period, they look at what you, what, how much you've earned, not what you've paid in, but how much you have earned. And so then they do a calculation. I did, I did, and I love this, but ChatGPT, I did this, and I Googled. You know, what would happen if I made eighty thousand dollars? I am fifty-nine years old right now, and for the next six years till I'm sixty-seven. What would my impact be at eleven seventy-three, which is fourteen thousand seventy-six dollars a year? Going into a separate tax item on my W two, which is box fourteen, what would that look at for me? If I did that, and it was between thirty and sixty dollars change in my bring home at sixty-seven years old? Now, that could be different based on salary, based on age and longevity. So what has happened when the NLC and the West Virginia Municipal League and all of our attorneys who have sat down, looked at all of this. Even the attorneys for the Intensive Wellness Plan looked at it, they gave us a range of two to five percent. And I feel like that can be a little high based on the multiple times that I've looked at it over salaries and ages and things like that. So. It it all depends. The other thing I think about, and I, again, I've done this for a long time, and I've talked to people, and I've watched people throughout the years. There were my clients go through chronic illnesses, go through events in their life that they did not plan for. Because they don't, none of us think we're gonna get sick. All of us think we're gonna be fine, and then it hits. We haven't stayed for it, we haven't prepared for it, our deductibles are so high, our out-of-pockets are so high. Financially, bankruptcy or medical claims is the highest, it's number one in the country. I had no idea, and I've done this for thirty-three years. So what we feel like, if we can make people proactive about their healthcare, make them well. Teach their children and their children and their, their children down the line. If they have these products in place now, it will protect them now, and hopefully they will get to age sixty-seven to draw their social security.
And that two to five percent, they may not ever see social security if they, if they're not helping.
And if they're young, who knows? I mean, I I I hope I get social security, I've paid in so long. But I don't know, I'm sorry, sorry.
I know we talked.
I'm just answering this question. Does that help? I mean, and again, ChatGTP, GPT, whatever it is, it's amazing. It gives you all kinds of answers, but.
Very good, very good question, too.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So with uh council's permission, I'd like to further explore this a little bit and see what their actual costs are to the city, how how that works and and we'll go back to you all. And let you know what the employer's interest is, if that's okay.
And we can do that with a census, just so you know, and we can do it really quickly and turn it around.
You'll, you'll see every, every employee's savings and what your potential savings would be as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, bro.
Thank you, council members. Thank y'all for your time. Why we talk so long?
All right, moving on to new business, heading number seven, the appointment to be here.
Okay, so um, as we know, we had a resignation to BZA, and we had um. A couple of slots that we were trying to fill for alternates, and that, or anyway. And just trying to keep um someone involved in the commissions and and in city government. I asked Dabita if she would be willing to serve on that committee, um, and she said she would. So with council's permission, I would like to uh to get her appointed to that committee. Her experience, we, we actually need some more experience on that, we would. I think, I think you know her. She's local.
I'm making a motion that we appoint Domena Johnson to fill the spot on BZA.
A second. All right, excuse me, we have a motion and a second to appoint Domena Johnson to the BZA board. All those in favor? All opposed? That motion is carried. Welcome back, Domena, if you're listening. We have now moving on to our department reports. We do have an MS four for tonight.
Uh, I actually have several things I wanna report on, if that's okay. Uh, so I know some of you were anxious to hear about our Virginia Street sidewalks. Um, that's been a battle to get information on that. We finally got uh plans from our engineer. So me and Tyler have been looking at them. We had Charlie look at them. We're making comments and getting those back to the engineer. Um, the engineer submitted them to the state. The state sent them back to the engineer with their comments. Uh, we made some additional comments on those plans, and then I went down and shot a quick video of that sidewalk, and guys, it's horrible. It is. I walked it, I'm glad I'm sure-footed, or I might have broken an ankle or something down there. So this is something that we, we need a lot, and uh I'm, I'm pushing to get this bid out before winter. So we can get a spring turnaround on it. As you know, we've been promised, and this probably has happened over here in in Oak Hill as well as it did in Hinton. But we've been promised by DOH that Virginia Street is on their paving list. Uh, we'll see if that happens or not, but i- if so, we wanna get these sidewalks done before that paving. Because we're, we're gonna get new gathering and and new curbing with all this project, and we wanna get that done first. So um I'm pushing to get this done in the spring. We're gonna get all our comments back to them and try and get Thrasher to get on the ball to get this thing bid out in the next month or so. I wanted to report on that. Um, also, uh, everybody's been made aware, the needles, I grand open is twenty-first, four o'clock. Please put that on your calendar, Joe Ten. That is a big deal for us. Um, I was on Senator Manchin's coming.
What time did you say?
So uh be great. Uh, we're gonna have a um freshman, we're gonna invite the community out, just. Try and have a celebration for that park. Uh, also, uh, please remember, the streets will be closed. For the homecoming parade on the fifteenth. Everybody come out and support our uh, our team. Um, and uh I also sent a big report to council uh recently. Um, it's been a busy month in City Hall, working on a lot of different things. And um if you have any questions on any of those, please corner me, call me, um, whatever, get me in a headlock, Bill. Let me know. Uh, me and Bill talked the other day about another program. I'm kind of gonna work on that a little bit and maybe bring it back to you next month. So. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is uh, MS four, we've all the ports turned in. Uh, we are up to date on everything. As far as I know, um, we want to make everybody aware this time of year. Please do not blow your leaves in creeks. Please do not blow them into the streets. Let's pick them up, let's bag them, let's shred them. Let's mulch them, let's do whatever we can to try and keep those out of our water system. We don't need any more flooding in this city. Try to avoid it as much as we can. Bridge Day, oh, and the city is setting up a uh tent table thing. Me and Brook, me and Brooke will be there all day at Bridge Day. Handing out city information, city of Oak Hill. Uh, if you're at Bridge Day, stop by and see us, and we'll give you a bottle of water and. So anyway, we're gonna try and promote Oak Hill best we can. Um, I I did a little radio spot while you were coming to Bridge Day. Uh, please stop by Oak Hill, visit our stores, visit our restaurants, think about us, as you know, as you're traveling to the Bridge Day celebration and. So um, let's try and uh, try and promote our area in every which way we can.
We're supposed to be nice on Bridge Day, too. I think it's seventy, so uh.
Any council comments?
I wanna bring up, like, um, this month, October twenty-fifth, on that Saturday night, we're doing trick-or-treat on Main Street. And we got like twenty-five businesses. Um, well, not just businesses, I think there's some individuals, but. And a lot of people are coming together for that. So if you have time that Saturday evening to come out, we'd appreciate it. And if you have candy, extra candy, just drop it off here at City Hall, because we're gonna need that too.
And also the, the night before, the evening before.
Oh, yeah, we're doing movie night.
Have a movie night here at the amphitheater also.
Sure, who does focus?
I'll focus, yeah.
We're up to thirty.
Are we up to thirty? Wow, okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I just wanna, I, I'm not gonna be very, I'm gonna be brief. About what Chris and I spoke, spoke about earlier, and uh so that we can all be thinking about it. Um, the, I, I've gotten several comments. I'm sure most everybody here has had questions and comments about. Two things, uh, recycle bin and a place for our citizens to put brush. And uh, so I would like to see it on a future agenda. Uh, either next month or the month after that, but I want uh city manager to have plenty of time to research. Those two subjects, there is much more complex than than it sounds. Uh, there's a lot of pros and cons and ins and outs. And uh, it has to be done right, or or it doesn't work. Um, and there's a cost involved in it. So um, it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of concern on our part to to move forward. If we move forward on one or or both or neither of those programs. But I, I want the city manager, and he's busy, and I want him to have plenty of time, and I want us to have plenty of time to think about it and uh. Re- you know, reach out to other municipalities, to the municipal, to how, how do other folks do it? What do other municipalities do? All, all those kinda, all those kinda things. What's DEP think about? Uh, uh, a place where you put brush. All those kinda questions need to be answered, and and how do we manage either one of those programs? All those kind of questions need to be answered and and how do we manage either one of those programs? So.
So. I did look into it a little bit, just give a a quick update. Uh we can't accept brush. We have to have a ad to put them. And you can only accept so much, so much tonnage per year. But then you've got to find everyone's way to dispose of that. It just might suck. That's what it's supposed to get and we we have it, we're storing it safely. How do we eliminate it? Well, I mean, if it's just prelims and such, of course, you can always mulch it up. Well, if it's around town, we could spread some mulch. So that that's one one thing we can do, but to do that. That's mulching, then that will get, we've got to wire for rents. So I mean, there's always a cost involves with each one of these programs that we undertake. The recycling as well. Uh we can try and partner with some of the local carriers and they might be willing to help us out a little bit.
Wasn't there a lady here? I have to go back and look.
Yeah, that was from um. Time before last, I think. It was in September.
Lady here, though, wasn't going to be any cost to the city. They just needed a foot.
That was just, yeah, they was just wanting, she was supposed to have been having a meeting up there at the convention center. That we could have came up and talked to.
There is some grants out there too, repass some grants. Uh when I was with him, we were fortunate to get some of those grants. A lot of them were for tire collection because they're really well. There is some other grants out there for. They want you to partner with a local carrier. They want you to have some kick in as well, you know, they just want you to have some skin in the game, but. I was just thinking earlier today, Chief and I talked about um. This uh car place up here, we're working on my car that day. Remember, we called them about those uh, they have some trash cans. Just sitting there. Well, I mean, I think they wanted to sell them, but it's possible they they could be used for that recycling program. I just kind of had that at the end of the day when I drove by it. I was like, hey, maybe we could use that for recycling. So anyway, they may already be here in our community. We just need to figure out a way to make it happen. So. Uh I'm working on it. After me and Bill talked, I got to work on it and and looking at some legislation that's out there. So anyway. Hopefully bring that back to you guys next month.
That'd be great because ever since we stopped taking the brush down behind the school, it's it's been a burden on the citizens.
I have a comment on that. My neighbor took some brush back and I've got a picture of it. It didn't cost him three hundred dollars to dump that. Now, why can't they charge down there and have somebody work two days a week or something? And charges them for nothing like it did over there. It's three hundred bucks. And I got a picture of his truck. And I asked him and said, what did that cost you? Three hundred bucks, I'll go back. So I don't know. Is there any way to make money like that or?
Well, anytime anytime you start a new program, there's simply costs involved.
Yeah, I know that. I didn't know if one broke and help wash the gate. I don't know how that would work or. And he could, so maybe come in, dump, and shut the gate.
I don't think, I think the way that that is, and Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because Charlie's not here, but. I don't think that the reason why we stopped putting brush down there was because we was getting full. I think the reason why we stopped putting brush down there was because it's not allowed. So there's where that comes in. It's not that we didn't want to. It's that we were made, we were forced to stop by another entity, not us.
All I heard is they did it because there were nothing, concrete blocks and.
That was.
Problem, but that's not what.
Okay.
No, that's not the reason why it stopped.
Okay.
Any future agenda items?
Mary, I've got one. Last month I requested that for a future agenda item to be. To consider remaining city ordinance one point zero six point zero two zero. And we just slipped up and get it on there for this month. So I'd like for that to be on there for next month.
What is that?
One point zero six point zero two zero as the deal with the city logo.
We allow that, sir.
Anyone else?
Chris, the uh city park, uh there was something on social media saying that it was vandalized. Can you comment on that? Because I think there was lots of different info going on out there.
I heard it was totally destroyed.
Yeah, that the project's in jeopardy.
Oh, it's, yes, yes, it's awful. There the the equipment's in good shape. Um from what I understand, there was some marking paint down there that was left and. Some kids used the marking paint to mark that fire pit. So um.
Very minimal.
Very minimal. Um there were some tools that were kind of kicked around and thrown around, but I mean, it it's pretty minimal. It in fact, I think the news thought it was, they kind of blew it up out of proportion and and they wanted to come interview me today and I was like, uh, let's not talk about that. Please go.
Thank you for the clarity.
Do we hear? And then cameras down there?
There uh the the suspects are on camera and hopefully in the process of being identified. There are numerous cameras.
Always said, um have them come and clean up.
Yeah, community.
I love community.
Take the construction crew, or they did, because I was there next morning. They. They remedied it. It took care of it. Very, very minimal. Like Chris said, some marking paint laying around. Nothing was destroyed. Just marked up a little bit with some paint. But it's being dealt with and hopefully before long those suspects will be dealt.
Any other announcements?
Mary, I've got one thing.
I was I was waiting on you. You look a little antsy.
We received notification from N R A C. It's a climbers association here in Fayette County. And they are going to purchase a uh a wheel, as referred to as in the event a climber at Needles Eye Park. Would be injured for their transportation out of the location to an ambulance. It's used throughout the county. Fayetteville has one. Anstead has one. It's essentially a a mobile transportation unit. That uh N R A C is uh willing to pay up to four thousand dollars for this unit. And it will be located at Needles Eye Park. So Josh Sapios in uh in the loop in regard to discussion of this. Just want to let you know that that's going to be placed at that location in the event we have a a service that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, let's uh we we're going to need a vote to accept all the department head reports.
I made that motion.
I'll circle it.
We have a motion and a second to accept all department reports. All in favor? Opposed? The highest have it. Our next regular council meeting will be November fifth. Um at six o'clock. Um a quick personal note for all of you that reached out when uh our family had that weekend bereaved with my grandmother passing. I want to say thank you to all of you. We got a lot of cards, we had a lot of kind words and a lot of notes from all of you. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it. So with that being said, if we're all in agreement, well done.
Now, November tenth, that is.
On a Monday, second Monday. All right, you clear? Guys, we are adjourned. Let's have a good night.